Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Veterans. Please silence all cell phone and electronic devices. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so via email council@NYC.gov. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning. Welcome to today's hearing. I'm Councilman Robert Holden, Chair of the Veterans Committee. And today, our committee is holding a hearing on legislation aimed at connecting our veterans with available mental health resources. So we will discuss Intro 1237, sponsored by Councilmember Dinowitz, a local law related to collecting demographic data on veterans. Intro 1239, sponsored by Councilmember Lee, a local law concerning community outreach and public education on mental health resources for veterans. And Intro 1241, sponsored by Councilmember Narcisse, a local law requiring the Commissioner of DVS to submit an annual report on the provision of mental health services by city agencies to veterans. And Intro 1244, sponsored by the Public Advocate, a local law regarding the development and distribution of informational pamphlet on accessing DVS resources. And Intro 837, sponsored by myself, urging the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Senate Bill 4717. This bill authorizes the New York State Department of Veteran Services to provide eligible veterans with financial assistance for purchasing, training, and upkeep of service and emotional support dogs. So these bills are part of the New York City's Council Mental Health Roadmap, addressing challenges in the city's mental health care system and enhancing evidence-based solutions to improve mental health outcomes for all in the organs, obviously including veterans. The second stop of the roadmap focuses on the mental health needs of our veterans. And annually, about 200,000 service members transition from active-duty service to civilian life. And the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration notes that many experience high stress during this transition, with roughly half not immediately connecting with available resources, benefits, or services. Additionally, more than half of the veterans with mental illness did not receive treatment in the past year, and over 90% with a substance abuse disorder also did not receive treatment. Our veterans who have bravely served our nation often bear unseen burdens long after their service. We must ensure they receive the support they've earned, and they certainly have earned it. The legislation we discuss today is a crucial first step in ensuring New York City veterans receive the care and support they deserve. And I want to acknowledge my colleagues, Councilmember Kagan to my left here, and on Zoom, we have Joanne Areola, Councilmember Areola. Anybody else? Also, I want to extend my thanks to the committee staff who prepared for this hearing, David Romero to my right, eight years in service to our nation, Anastasia Zemina, the policy analyst, and my staff member, Daniel Cazina, Chief of Staff. I will also, we don't have Jomani? Okay, so, all right. So I will turn it over to Committee Counsel, David Romero, to administer the oath to the witnesses from the administration. Welcome.
Good morning. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. He may be getting one ready.
Good morning, Chair Holden, committee members and advocates. My name is James Hendon. I'm proud to serve as Commissioner of the New York City Department of Veteran Services, or DVS. Thank you for holding this hearing on the package of legislation you've introduced to further support and amplify mental health services for veterans and their families. I'm joined today by Dr. Lauren Demello, Executive Director of Mental Health and Care Coordination, Ellen Greeley, Assistant Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Partnerships, and Paul Vallone, Deputy Commissioner for External Affairs. We are here today to discuss the following priorities laid out in Stop Two of the City Council's Mental Health Roadmap. Intro 1237, collection of demographic data. Intro 1239, community outreach on mental health resources. Intro 1241, reporting on mental health services. Intro 1244, distribution of resource guides, and then state legislation for emotional support dogs. The New York City Council's Mental Health Roadmap is a critical and well-considered combination of steps in addressing the social determinants of health for our veterans. It is an essential initiative that recognizes the unique health challenges faced by veterans and seeks to provide comprehensive support. Here, I will outline the importance of Stop Two and discuss three key areas for the committee and the rest of the council to consider now and in the future during the legislative development process. These areas are: One, bolstering existing legislation to reach its intent more effectively. Two, codifying existing resources to enhance or secure its future success. And three, redirecting the focus of veterans and their needs from an individual need such as mental health to a whole health approach to include housing and economic health, further reducing the ongoing stigma of all veterans having severe mental health challenges. Addressing such needs begins with a very simple but effective question: Have you or your loved one ever served in the U.S. Armed Forces? Executive Order 65 has allowed us to begin data collection as it relates to veterans and their needs, but Intro 1237 codifies that effort and bolsters its concept into something DVS and many other agencies can build on as it relates to our data sharing efforts. For Intro 1237, the importance of data sharing among government offices and agencies throughout New York cannot be overstated, particularly when it comes to coordinating care for veterans and their families. Asking the crucial question of whether a client or constituent has ever served in the U.S. Armed Forces can be a game changer in tailoring support. However, to ensure the seamless sharing of this critical information, an opt-out option rather than an opt-in option is essential. By implementing an opt-out system, we maximize the potential for data collection and coordination, ensuring that veterans and their families receive the comprehensive care and support they deserve. This collaborative approach will not only improve the efficiency of service delivery, but also help identify and address the unique needs and challenges faced by our veteran community, ultimately enhancing their overall well-being and quality of life. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the success of data sharing played a pivotal role in our response efforts. Government agencies, healthcare providers, and researchers came together to share crucial information on infection rates, testing, contact tracing, and vaccine distribution. This collaborative data sharing approach allowed us to make informed decisions, track the virus's spread, and allocate resources effectively. It also facilitated the foundation of our Mission Vet Check initiative. Mission Vet Check, which we have relaunched, and visit NYC.gov/vetcheck to learn more, resulted in the execution of over 34,000 total calls with an approximate 25% answer rate, equating to over 100 calls answered per week. Of those answered calls, DVS is proud to have been able to serve the more than 1,200 requests for service since launching. All of this occurred due to the successful implementation of critical data sharing agreements with our city partners at the New York City Department of Homeless Services, New York City Human Resources Administration, and other agencies. The success of data sharing during the pandemic showcased the power of collective information sharing in times of crisis, underscoring the importance for future public health challenges. This is why we are so passionate about this legislation, about seeing it age with the appropriate mechanisms for agencies and offices in New York City government to serve our clients with a no-wrong-door approach. I want to be clear, we support the spirit of this legislation in execution in order for this to be seamless and account for the council and administrative administration's intent. We recommend mimicking as closely as possible language that appears in the Veteran Indicator Question on City Forms section of Executive Order 65. It's on page three. You all have copies of EO 65 in front of you. If anyone's following online, you can visit NYC.gov/vetreports, click Executive Orders tab, EO 65 is a link that appears there. So you can go to NYC.gov/vetreports, Executive Order tab, click the EO 65 link. When you look at the section titled Veteran Indicator Question on City Forms, it's page three, this doesn't and should not be a 100% word-for-word repetition. One item is an executive order, the other is city council law, or city law, these things are different. The caveats, when we look at how this could be in law, number one, the indicator question itself, which agencies already use, should stay the same. It reads, "Has anyone in your household ever served, or has anyone currently serving in the U.S. Armed Forces, National Guard, or Reserves? Please select all that apply." From there, you can select self, spouse/partner, child, or other. If it says other, you click right in. The question should say the same. Once again, it's, "Has anyone in your household ever served, or are they currently serving in the U.S. Armed Forces, National Guard, or Reserve?" Caveat two, there should be a follow-on question that should read something along the lines of, "Check here if you would not like to be contacted by the New York City Department of Veteran Services about veteran and military-specific programs, benefits, and services available to you." So that follow-on question should say, "Check here if you would not like to be contacted by the New York City Department of Veteran Services about veteran and military-specific programs, benefits, and services available to you." This makes sharing the information an opt-out. The third thing, it ties to Section 9 within the EO, and when you look at this section that begins, "When collecting and disclosing to DVS information related to the Veteran Indicator Question," you should also have a portion that says, "In addition to contact information that was approved by a respondent to be shared with DVS." So the portion that already says, "When collecting and disclosing to DVS information relating to the Veteran Indicator Question," this ought to be some language that says, "In addition to contact information that was approved by a respondent to be shared with DVS." This gets at three things. It asks the question, it obtains consent for the data to be shared with us about that veteran or veteran family, and it ensures that it is shared through the agencies to us. And those are our thoughts on Intro 1237. Now, for Intros 1239 and 1244, having no-wrong-door approach also requires technological synergy amongst every office, agency, and agency executing the mutual goal of uplifting our veterans and their families. Traditionally, this synergy has been held together by DVS through current local laws, including Local Law 113. It's codified in Local Law 42, first when we were over, but currently, it's executed through Local Law 113. This ties to our inter-agency work to cultivate and maintain relationships with designated veteran liaisons in each city agency and office. Local Law 216, the creation and public sharing of our Veterans Resource Guide. Local Laws 215 and Local Law 44, the complementary public reports that outline the outcomes associated with the services and resources shared in our Veterans Resource Guide. Understanding Intro 1244's intent is to bolster the awareness and access to critical mental health resources through a pamphlet, we hope the public advocate will consider amending the legislation to address the operational component of connecting our clients to those resources using a care coordination platform. It's currently known as Vet Connect NYC or Vet Connect. Vet Connect NYC is a multi-service provider referral platform utilized by an array of public and private institutions that have the mutual goal of connecting veterans and their families with resources to enrich their lives. Veterans submit an assistance request via an online intake form, or by speaking to our care coordinators at one of our locations throughout the five boroughs, or by calling us. The number is 212-416-5250, 212-416-5250. The care coordinators then input the client into the platform. A brief interview is conducted, which includes two voluntary mental health screeners, the General Anxiety Disorder 7, or GAD 7, and the Patient Health Questionnaire 9, or PHQ9, which screen for anxiety and depression respectively. The screeners are reviewed with each client, and mental health services are offered. All referrals are sent to our numerous selections of providers, which include the VA Vet Centers, VA Medical Centers, other government agencies, private and nonprofit partners, and Veterans Crisis Lines. As Intro 1239 points out, the need for outreach and engagement on mental health resources is critical to advancing this connection to care. Vet Connect and the impact it creates depend on outreach and engagement. This is because the success of our coordinated approach to educating veterans and their families about connecting them to mental health resources is tied to the relationship DVS maintains with city, state, federal, and nonprofit organizations. This same interagency effort can be applied to Intro 1241 to close gaps relevant to mental health programming and public reporting. Speaking of Intro 1241, the proposed law mandating the Commissioner of the NYC Department of Veteran Services to collect data and information from agencies providing mental health services to veterans through an annual report is a significant step towards improving the support system for our veteran community. This interagency collaboration can seamlessly integrate into the codifying of the Vet Connect system, streamlining the process of connecting veterans with the services they need. The NYC Department of Veteran Services is enthusiastic about contributing to an existing annual report required by the Mayor's Office of Community Mental Health, OCMH, which identifies critical gaps in mental health care and preventing New Yorkers with mental health needs from accessing and staying connected to care. This is tied to Local Law 155 of 2021. We're interested in working with OCMH so that it includes specific insights regarding veterans. By including veterans in this report, we recognize the unique mental health needs of this population and the importance of tailoring services to address their experience and challenges. It will shed light on the barriers veterans face in accessing and staying connected to mental health care, helping us develop more targeted and effective interventions. Furthermore, it underscores the commitment of the city to improve the overall well-being of our veterans by ensuring they have access to the quality mental health services they deserve. This proposed law is a testament to New York City's dedication to providing comprehensive support for our veterans and fostering a more inclusive and responsive mental health care system for all New Yorkers. I want to speak now on ending the stigma surrounding mental health and veterans. The stigmatization of veterans and their mental health needs is deeply concerning, is an issue. It's a deeply concerning issue that has profound effects on our community. This stigma often oversimplifies the experiences of veterans and accurately categorizing them into broad stereotypes. The truth is, veterans' mental health challenges are as diverse as their backgrounds and experiences in the military. Whether they experience mild or severe levels of depression and anxiety, it is crucial to recognize that these symptoms can be amplified by financial and housing insecurity. And a healthy relationship with finances and stable housing are fundamental aspects of overall well-being, and addressing these areas is equally important as addressing mental health. To best support our veterans, we must move beyond stereotypes, break the stigma, and focus on providing comprehensive assistance that includes mental health support, financial stability, and secure housing, ensuring that all veterans could thrive in their civilian lives. This permeates everywhere. I want to say, according to VA's National Center for PTSD, 7% of all veterans will suffer from PTSD at some point in their lives. Meanwhile, 6% of all Americans will suffer from PTSD at some point in their lives. We have issues, yes, but we are not significantly different from non-veterans when it comes to mental health. We want to strike a balance between taking care of our community's mental health needs while not infantilizing them. The victim-hero narrative perpetuated on U.S. Military Service Members past and present is toxic. In conclusion, Stop Two, Veterans' Mental Health in the New York City Council's Mental Health Roadmap is an important and necessary combination of steps to address the social determinants of health for veterans. While some goals may seem to overlap with existing local laws, they are in fact complementary at their core. DVS supports this initiative in hopes the council will take into consideration what was shared today. Mayor Adams and his administration are deeply committed to the success and well-being of the city of New York. They recognize that the path to achieving this success lies in fostering effective communication and synergy between agency leadership, like myself, and city council offices across all corners of our great city. In Mayor Adams's vision, a win for New York is a win for all of its residents, and by working collaboratively and transparently, we can ensure that our city thrives, prospers, and provides a brighter future for all who call it home, especially our veterans. Together, we can overcome challenges, seize opportunities, and build a stronger, more resilient, and inclusive New York City that benefits every member of our diverse and vibrant community. I urge you all to please reach out to me or our Senior Advisor of Intergovernmental Affairs, Jason Lawfrin. Please view us as a tool to help navigate our legislative ideas and act as an optimizer to your historic and future success. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, again, for the testimony. And I have a few questions, and then I'll pass it off to my colleague if he has any other questions. And we, I think we still have Joanne Areola online, and we have to get a quarrel now before she can answer questions. Again, I want to thank you, Commissioner, and it's good to see you again. And I see you a lot, you know, we do meet, and that's a pleasure, and we do have a lot of events that we both attend, and I appreciate your dedication to our veterans. But I just want to ask a few questions on, you know, again, general questions first, and then we'll get into the bills. But how frequently do veterans reach out to DVS seeking mental health services? And I know that's hard to, because eventually, it gets into other areas, but just a general consensus of, you know, and I'm surprised, 70% of our veterans have post, some issues.
Seven percent.
Oh, seven.
So seven percent of veterans, six percent, yeah, seven percent of veterans, six percent of all Americans, general population.
So seven percent.
Just seven percent at some point in their lives.
Okay.
Six percent, general population.
Yeah, no, 70 didn't seem.
No, no, no.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I defer to Dr. Demello.
Yeah.
Hi, so according to our data from this year, approximately 12 veterans outreach mental health, seek mental health services from our agency each month.
Okay, so, yeah.
Twelve, every month, approximately.
So it averages 12s. But we know from experience that in talking, especially the, some of the more, we go into the shelters or other areas, we'll come across veterans who need help. And just in talking, when I visit some of the American Legions or Vet Halls, I talk to the veterans, and you can see their suffering. So it's, again, it's, we have to, you know, overcome some of the barriers, I think, that we face with veterans not seeking help. And that's, that's another hurdle that we have to get through. But can you describe the process, Commissioner, when a veteran contacts DVS via Vet Connect for mental health support? Does it go to a number of individuals, or they come in and talk to DVS?
I defer to Dr. Onis.
Okay.
Hi, so when someone comes to Outreach Services from DVS, they can come in through a certain number of channels, including email, walk-in, they can call. They come into our office, and they're greeted by a care coordinator, and from there, assessments are done. They're welcome to do a voluntary mental health screener. We have two of them. One is the PHQ9, and the other is the GAD 7. They assess for anxiety and depression. They are voluntary. We do offer mental health services regardless if they want to take the screener. We do let them know their score, and we do ask further questioning to see if we can match services more accordingly. So if they mention that they are suffering from PTSD, or they are an MST survivor, a military sexual trauma survivor, we do match them with special providers that have a specialty in treating these concerns.
And what methods to treat post-traumatic stress disorder? Because there's a number of different methods, new ones that have been mentioned. Like, for instance, if, you know, the protocols of a veteran expresses thoughts of self-harm or harm to others, I don't know if that happens, but if you get to that point, are there special treatments that you recommend?
So from an agency perspective, we do not recommend treatment. It is not, it wouldn't be the best care that we provide. We do refer them to treatment providers that do full assessments, and they do recommend treatment accordingly, but it wouldn't be best practices to.
So you recommend to go to a specific place for treatment? Do you do a follow-up to see if they actually did it?
So we do have a follow-up in Mission Vet Check where we take our most severe scores from our assessments, additional, our housing, our homeless veterans that have come to our office. We do follow up with them to make sure that their services have been met, or if they'd like different providers, or if they're unhappy, we do outreach them again.
So you do outreach, and do you take, you collect feedback from their experiences?
We do.
You do? Could you share those, you know, general, I'm not talking about names or anything, but just, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see some of the comments that, you know, were they treated well, did they get help, did it work? Because we need that data, you know, we certainly want to see if things are working.
Mr. Chair, I want to interject. What's delicate with this is getting certain data while being mindful of someone's privacy as far as whatever the situation was.
I know, we're not talking names.
I know, I know, just for us, it's trying to navigate that piece of, and we're getting that information.
For instance, 70% said they were satisfied, let's say, so that's good to know. 70% said, no, they didn't get, you know, that could, I'd just like to know, general, you know, if you could share that with the committee, we'd like to see what feedback we're getting and where, what areas we need to improve. That's our job in the City Council.
Council, one thing that I do inform our veterans is that when they do access treatment, I do let them know that it might not be a one-time deal, right? They might try a provider, like their form of treatment or their style. So you're going to run the gamut with, they might not like the services just because they might not like their provider or their treatment, where they can come back to us and we can match them to a better fit, similar to primary care.
So tell me, Dr., what happens when a veteran comes in and they say they have a problem with substance abuse? Do you recommend the locations and then, same question, do you follow up with them to see if they're doing well or not?
So not specific to substance use. We prioritize for Mission Vet Check homeless veterans and veterans who score high on the PHQ9 and the GAD 7, but we do refer any veteran with substance use disorder to treatment providers. Most of them are local to them. We try to match them by zip code or something convenient for them to attend.
So does DVS collaborate with social services to identify homeless veterans suffering from serious mental illness or substance abuse disorders? And how do these agencies cooperate, if at all?
So specifically to DSS, we have a new group that we have formed called the Veterans Complex Case Review Team. And so there are 22 collaborative partners that meet weekly, and we pick two veterans' cases. We go through their bio cycle socials, and we all collaborate on coming up with a treatment plan. By the following week, we review the plan in place. We see if it's working, if it's not working, we make tweaks. It's a really good collaborative experience where we really delve into each case, and we make very thoughtful suggestions.
All right. And Commissioner, I'm going to ask you this question. When you leave the service, what happens? The Veterans Administration, do they interview you to see if you're, you know, okay, or are you set up? You know, because, let's face it, you go into the service, everything is organized, and you're, you know, you have everything, you have a schedule, you have places to go each time, you know, days that you're, you're programmed. You have a program, you have a schedule, you have jobs. Now you go into civilian life. Does the VA give enough help in that area, do you think, in your own experience?
And I'll just speak to me. I, so I left active duty in late 2009. Then I came on the reserve in 2010, so there was a gap, some gap time, and I was just, you know, clean as a veteran. And when I was going through the transition process as far as leaving the service, I was paired with someone from, at the New York State Department of Veteran Services. I transitioned out from West Point. I was paired with someone who helped me put up, put my claim in as far as getting disability compensation. And that process kind of triggered me coming into the VA healthcare system, and so that was something where I was brought into it. It's not, in my opinion, just me speaking as a veteran, it wasn't necessarily that someone from the VA is constantly following up, trying to reach out to you. It's that, you know, you take advantage of it if you choose, if you desire to. And for me, I wanted to take advantage of it. And so that's, that's my story. I think it's different for other people, but a key takeaway is that I wouldn't say that it's the VA constantly trying to reach out to folks, because if during that juncture, let's say I said, okay, look, let me step away from this, not really explore this, I can easily just fall into shadows and not be as accessible, because the last data that they will even have had access to was old information. I would have moved since I got out. And so I think the VA is sometimes in the dark with having the information to follow up with people. And you have the person who may not have that willingness. And so that's why it's so important, work we're doing to get the DD214s as soon as someone gets out, so we can try to make contact with them, so that we can get them before the data becomes stale, it becomes cold, and try to hold on to them as far as, you know, even if not today for VA healthcare, maybe sometime tomorrow, but at least we know who you are, so we can keep making you aware of what's available.
But somebody, again, getting down to the basic level, somebody from the VA, or let's say, in the case of, you're in the Army, and you're getting out, you've been serving for 10 years, let's say, does anybody actually, a person, not on the phone, just say in person, talk to you about some of the challenges you may have? Because you've been, you've been in, you know, you're going back to civilian life. So I'm just curious, is it on the phone, or does somebody sit down?
And I'll just speak to mine, and I'll defer to Ellen, who coordinates a lot of our transition work that we do, touching our transitioning service members. For me, it wasn't necessarily that somebody went out of their way to speak to me, it was that, you know, during my TAP, my Transition Assistance Program, during that workshop I went through, someone said, hey, if you guys want to get benefits, go see this person about it. And so I went and saw someone, and they had, there was also, I think, a representative from American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, who was nearby, but it was one where it was, you know, they weren't in the room for the TAP. They were just outside, say, if you want to talk to someone, then please, you know.
So it's just voluntary, just a.
And I can tell you, I know from seeing this now, it's a commander-by-commander basis as far as, it's up to that garrison commander if they will even allow that representative from that VSO to be near when that person is getting out. Like, you have, you know, places, not here in New York State, or they have things like this in Hampton, in New York City, where a commander may not even allow, you know, someone from American Legion or from VFW to be there to address. you know, someone from American Legion or from VFW to be there to address those folks. It's not codified that someone is there to say, hey, I'm here if you need somebody to talk to.
So they, yeah, but, uh, you, you wanted a?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, when you're leaving the military, there is this Transition Assistance Program that you're encouraged to take. It's a lot of information in a short amount of time. What you remember may be a challenge. What I can tell you is that the VA just recently set up, in fact, here in the Bronx, the Bronx VA, um, Dr. Joe J- Jurese is heading a special unit for those, um, cap- those ser- transitioning service members that have, that, uh, have departed from DOD but have yet to apply for their benefits at the VA.
Right.
And if you are in need of medication, if you are in need of quick therapy, you can contact Dr. Joe Jurese. And he, he's doing this nationwide. It's not only in the Bronx, for, for the Bronx, but it's nationwide where he has a special mental health clinic set up in order to respond to that very specific niche time.
Yeah, I, I just think that, uh, again, to me, that, that, you know, people leaving the service should actually sit down and go through a PowerPoint, you know, and take notes and, and to have a packet of, you know.
Part, part of it is the integration of all that material. I think we'd like, when you're leaving college or you're going through any major transition, you know, you're, you're given a lot of stuff and how it feels just through your system.
Yeah, I get it.
Takes, takes time, but I, they, they're improving. They rec- I think the military recognizes that it's not been a strong point of theirs over time. And they are addressing it. They do have this expiration of term service, which they're now calling Onward Ops Program, also founded by Dr. Joe Jurese, where I, up to a year ahead of time, they prep you for transition. In fact, I'm a mentor for three separate individuals out there.
All right, that's good to know, okay.
And, and, and taking that. So it doesn't happen at all the installations, but it is becoming more frequent. And I could tell you that, you know, you have to work very gingerly with, with people who are going through transition and carefully.
Right. And Commissioner, you mentioned something in, in your testimony, you address a part of this, but at the most recent hearing, DVS discussed veterans' lack of self-identification as a barrier to connecting with some of these services. Uh, and, uh, moving forward, how, how do you plan to address it, other than the Vet Connect and everything? How do you plan to address that? Cause you said they could opt out of even answering questions or, uh?
I, I want to speak to that opt-out piece and I'll answer that question to you.
Yeah, right.
One way we want to, uh, our main way of trying to do this. Um, even the, this discussion right now about us learning who a transitioning service member is so we can stay in touch with them. So it took over two years to fight to get data from the DOD. So we now know when someone is put on their DD two-fourteen or separation statement that they're coming to New York City, we know who they are. The next fight is when you're leaving the military, they ask a question saying, you know, would you like for us to share your contact information with the state that you're going to? We want to change that to being an opt-out, where instead of it being, you know, check here if you want us to share the information. It says, no, check here if you don't want us to share the information.
So it's reversed, yeah.
Yeah, because people were in that, this is the, the federal government's TAP program where folks are in it up to a year prior to separation. Right now, about thirteen percent of folks who fill that form out check the opt-in. And so it's not as much data as we think it'll be if you invert it. Uh, and so right now, we, we're going to start receiving this information next spring, around April, we'll start receiving the TAP data. But keep in mind, I'm only going to have folks who opted in to have their things shared with New York. So we're trying to invert that. So that kind of informs something we were saying about Intro twelve thirty-seven also about making it an opt-out to kind of, you know, increase the amount of information that we're able to give. Now, to your question about outreach, oh, we've been trying to, I literally got a text today just now, I want to update you on this. Uh, we've been working to make sure that what data we have, we share with all whom we can share it with. And so we, uh, you know, first agreement, we were able to execute with the Speaker's Office for the City Council so that all council members should be able to receive any and all data we have on our veterans. Uh, we've also gone and had an agreement executed with the, uh, State Assembly. We're still working, have to confirm what's going on with the one with the State Senate. Uh, we're working with the New York delegation federally so that our federal electors have the information. Uh, we also have an agreement like this with the VA. Uh, the text that I got said that we now are doing data sharing directly with New York State DVS, which took some time working with the Chamber at the state level. We want to live in a world where this is all about touches. If multiple people are reaching out to our veterans, it is inevitable that more people will say, I want to come on the net. And so if it's not just me, but you, not just me and you, but also Assembly member so-and-so, Senator such-and-such, Borough President such-and-such. There's another one too. The first Borough President Agreement was, uh, signed with the Bronx Board President's Office. And so that's another one. We're looking at expanding to other BPs. Uh, the Borough President Agreements include a carve-out where it authorizes that to be shared with the count, the community board districts. And so what we see in the Bronx, what, right now, we're looking to have a meeting with all the GCs and the BPs, just get it done in one shot. You'll see those community boards having this access as well. And so we want to have so many different people touching. And if so many touch, it is inevitable that more of our brothers and sisters will come into the light. So that's the, that's the main plan. There's a lot of other things we do with our social media, our typical engagement and outreach, but really the main plan, it flows directly through you.
So just, just a follow-up on that. Um, when you, when, um, I mean, just with the experience, and maybe the doctor wa- might want to weigh in on this, but let's say some, uh, veteran clearly has post-traumatic stress disorder. Um, would they check that box? Because they had such bad experi- let's say they had such a bad experience and they were in combat, or they had, they were, they have nightmares. They want to forget about the Army, or they want to forget about everything that, in, in the past. And that's one of the, that's probably one of the symptoms when they can't even look back.
Doc, may I say something that I, I want to refer to? This is her area, but I have to say, in my mind, we're at a place of, can you check the box that you even served? You know, I'm almost like, like that's
They're proud that they served.
Yeah, that's the.
But to be contacted, that's what I'm, I'm concerned. They, they want to, do you want to be contacted? No, I don't, I, I want to forget about that. You know, I want to forget about my past. I mean, is, is that an issue? Have you run into that? And the doctor probably has.
I'll, I'll, I'll defer to, to Lauren.
Yeah, so I think it depends on every individual's lived experience. Depending on their experience, they may or may not want to self-identify because it could be traumatic. Maybe they do feel the stigma of mental health. It could be frowned upon based on, you know, their military background and how it was perceived while they were in the military. So it really depends. But yeah, they're definitely veterans that don't want to self-identify because they're afraid of being re-traumatized.
Yeah.
May I just add that it may not be the service member, uh, or the veteran that calls, but it may be the spouse or the family member that's call, the caregiver that's calling. And that's a lot of the calls that come into, into play here.
A- and that's what my mom did, by the way. Cause my father didn't want to contact the Army. He didn't want anything to do with it. So that, that's exactly what my mom did.
Right.
And then she had to take me down to the, you know, the VA.
Correct, that's right.
Because she felt overwhelmed and, you know, she needed like somebody as a witness to, to what's going on. So, yeah, that, that's probably, um.
Yeah, that's why it's so important for us to, to reach out to our caregivers and, and.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Can I ask something, uh, that you, you know, something someone told me when I, um, was a, you know, young lieutenant and it stays with me is, the Army doesn't care about you. People in the Army care about you. You have some folks who will have their time in service and then just be jaded afterwards because they felt like they were just you. So it's not just PTSD is one piece of it. It could also just be general, maybe dissatisfaction with that military experience. And it takes a lot to convince someone that, look, that's, that issue is separate from us making sure we're doing right by you and everything you've earned as a veteran. And so that's something else, I think, that, that may feed into this, that. And I, just in a vet last night where, uh, someone said something along the lines of, yeah, I just got out, I didn't really tell anyone I served. I didn't want them to treat me any differently. And so that's a whole other thing as far as this feeling of a stigma that, you know, just presumption that as soon as I say that I've served, people are going to just automatically switch to thinking of me as broken or thinking of me in a different way, et cetera. So there, there's so much that goes into these decisions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilmember Vicky Palladino. Welcome. And, um, I have a few questions on, uh, on, uh, twelve thirty-seven. Um, and, and again, you might have answered this, but are veterans asked about their status in forms from city agencies? Uh, they're supposed to have that on there. And have you discovered any agencies that are not doing that with, uh, you know, have that little, a checkbox?
I want to, I'll leave now, let anybody else jump on this. The issue with it, in my opinion, is we don't know who the people are. So all we get is the numbers. So we'll say, this is the number of people who answered this question from this agency. We get the numbers.
You only get the backend, but, but you don't, you don't, uh, it'd be nice to see how, you know, there's, obviously some of the agencies, their forms. I know, uh, when I was talking to, uh, the Queens DA, she mentioned that she's, she discovered, you know, in the veterans' treatment courts that they weren't asked. They didn't, they didn't have, you know, they didn't identify, they were arrested, they didn't id- they, she said the police didn't have that on their forms. And she, she actually pushed for it and would made sure that they put it on. But I just want to know, sometimes we lapse, we, we, we go backwards and, and, uh, you know, things, uh, an old form would resurface. So I just want to know, have you seen, you know, uh, obviously they do fall through the cracks, some of, some of our, our veterans because, you know, when they do get arrested. Um, but have you seen any more, any other agencies?
May I just add that it's not only about checking the box, but it's about the person who's reviewing the form and what do they do with that information? What triggers the person who's re- who's reviewing the information and, and how do they basically connect them to Veteran Treatment Court at that, yeah, it's required, uh, yeah, so you check it. But who is, is a person properly trained to take it to the next level?
Right.
And that's really an important piece to all of this too.
And, and the Mayor's Office of Operations is a great job of shepherding a lot of the agencies to make sure folks are including this as far as whatever their newer form is to have that in, that, that question. I think it's more so about, you know, uh, that's what Ellen said as far as those next steps, but just us trying to go beyond just having numbers, but having if someone wants to share the informa- their contact info, so we can follow up, us having that. That's the big thing that we're very, when we think about twelve thirty-seven, just having that other component where we can be able to.
Yeah, but, uh, but is DVS, is your agency, uh, and get informed about the total number of veterans residing in the city? Who, who gives you that information or where do you get it from?
It's, we, it's a combination between us cross-referencing census data and looking at information that we receive from the DOD, um, and, you know, checking other sources as far as the data.
So there's no central agency that just like says, we have this many, four hundred, uh, new, uh, veterans?
Oh, excuse me, I thought you were talking about the entire number of veterans in the city.
No, but let, no, but let's say they updated, you know, on a monthly basis, or do you get notice, or do you have to actually do the work and, and, and find out? I mean, you're, you're, you're shaking your head yes, that?
Well, the DOD data, for instance, we get on a monthly basis. It's systematic. When we get the data though, we have to clean the data.
Yeah, you gotta really go through it.
And then, and then it's the questions of the data that you have. How useful is the data? So we did a huge outreach for a transition summit that we, we, uh, co-sponsored with the Mets last June. And we did tremendous amount of emails and texts and, but not everybody has an email address. Every, not everybody has a telephone, uh, uh, so you can text, not, you know, so it's, and when you get those, that information, a lot of it comes back to you. So it's, a lot of it is, we are, you know, we do have staff devoted to cleaning data a lot.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look this up in a second, cause I think the key thing, um, when we talk about the number, at least the numbers of our veterans, Mr. Chair, and just knowing who these groups are, there's a group that is just, that we have not been able to get the, the numbers on. We believe the floor is about two-hundred three thousand, is the absolute floor of veterans in this city, which I can go to, into a second. It's the group of folks who served on guard or reserve status, those who never were on federal active orders during the Cold War period. That's a group where we've not been able to obtain through different means. We haven't been able to get that information. Uh, on the census side, census only will show someone who has served on a federal status at some point and no longer serves. So I'm not included when you look at the, cause I'm still in the reserve. So I'm not in the census information. And so when we've tried other means, we've been dealing with this in a back and forth with DOD for a while, who are all the guardsmen, all the reserves, at least how many guardsmen, reservists, active duty, we have, getting that, census information, other things. The X factor, we're at two oh three thousand, but it's much higher if you account for anyone who is Cold War era, so post-Vietnam, pre-Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm, who was only on, you know, state, who was never on federal active orders. So I just, I wanted to add that.
Yeah, so I, you know, see, cause I would think that you, the VA should actually update you, uh, periodically about how many veterans are residing here in New York City.
We have better information in the VA on this stuff. That's why it was important, the data sharing.
No, but they, they, no, but let's say they move to New York City. You don't, how are you supposed to know that?
Well, that's through the DOD data that we're getting on a monthly basis.
You are getting that.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting it. But it's, it, again, the, first of all, this is for veterans who are opting in to reporting the information.
All right, only if they, yeah.
And then, of course, what, again, I, if I'm the person who's looking at the data, I want to see, who are the people who I could actually send an email or a text to? Okay? And the, that number gets reduced.
But do, when you do get, what, what kind of information do you get on them?
It's just, it's just plain contact.
Just what?
Plain contact information.
Just contact information? You don't get any details? So you have to, you have to go and find it.
This is why Mission Vet Check is so important. Mission Vet Check is us going to offense to kind of corroborate what we can to help these people.
That's the hurdle here, because that's where, you just get a, uh, contact information. There's not much, you, you know, you, you don't get any, the, how long they served, or, you know, what, did they serve in combat? They served here? The, you know, that's, that's a big issue, yeah.
Right, right.
Do you have any?
Yes.
Okay. I want to turn it over to, uh, Councilman Kay again for questions and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Chair Holden. Very important hearing. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your testimony. So I have a few questions. My question is about budget a little bit. So first of all, recently, as you know, Mayor announcing upcoming budget cuts. Uh, did you hear anything? Will it affect, uh, Veteran Services Administration, uh, of your department? Do you expect any cuts to Veteran Services?
Right now, as far as the, uh, upcoming iteration of these things, it's, uh, us looking internally as far as how we can do this in a way that's as thoughtful as possible, still delivering service to our people. So anything that is duplicative in nature, where we have a program that we can see is already, you know, being done at the federal level or the state level, we're looking at, say, okay, maybe we need to reduce these things. But right now, we're still in a place where we're still trying to put the pieces together, uh, you know, Ms. Councilmember, about what will these cuts be for this upcoming, uh, iteration? Uh, I just want to, yeah.
Also, I represent Coney Island and I already mentioned it. I would love to see you serve vets place on Surf Avenue on West Twenty-first Street. It's a special housing for veterans.
We actually do a food program every Wednesday and serve vets.
We get food out there.
In fact, in fact, we just gave them a whole bunch of turkeys last.
That's very good. I'm saying like, I would love to see you there here. I know you're very busy.
I'll let you know, cause I was there, they recently, you know, they have the, the, the downstairs area where they're going to make like a, a coffee shop now, where veterans can get, uh, work experience training by working in this coffee slash bagel shop down there. I was there for that ribbon cutting, I think it was last month, but I'll be sure to, to come and I'll let you know. I, I'm so sorry about not informing you that I was going to be there for that. Cause I think anything that brings me down, I did a point in time count in Coney Island as far as, you know, uh, just, uh, a few years ago. So anything where I'm there in general, I'll definitely reach out, Mr. Councilman. I apologize for not letting you know about that.
Yeah, I also have Marlboro Military Post in Gravesend also, like, if you ever would like to visit, just let us know, it will be great. And, uh, yes, it's up to council offices. Uh, many veterans still are not aware of many, many services that you offer. And it's a challenge. Talking social media, not everybody's on social media. So that's why it's even more important to be proactive. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, um, I just, uh, again, some, some more questions on twelve thirty-nine. Um, uh, you, so you get the, uh, back to the contact information. You get the, the location, you get their address of the veterans and their phone numbers. Um, what areas of the city have really the higher concentration of veterans? So, so.
Queens. Queens has, Queens has the highest concentration.
Yeah, we're proud of that.
Queens is the highest number of veterans. Staten Island has the highest concentration. So Queens is the highest number of veterans, but the concentration, one out of twenty people who live in Staten Island is a veteran.
Yeah, all the more, that, see, all the, that's why we have to save our halls, our veterans', uh,
Totally.
service centers, because, uh, you know, especially in Staten Island and Queens, we have a, how many do we have in Queens or just?
Oh, over.
Fifty-eight thousand off the, I, top, I have fifty-eight thousand.
Oh, you're, you're talking about.
As far as Queens veterans.
Yeah, yeah. But we have a tremendous number of VSOs and VF, uh, and VFWs in, uh, and, um, American Legions in Queens. Um, yeah, it's the largest number.
This is all connected. So this story about us putting hands on the transitioning service members and us reconstituting our VSOs, getting young blood in them, it's all tied in. So we're trying to do what we can to animate more of the young folks who are coming to New York City, to tie them into the various halls, the various posts and whatnot, so we can see a new generation take the helm for these.
Yeah.
Actually, just to give you the heads up, I was on the phone yesterday talking about new bathroom tiles for post-force, American Legion post-four sixty, just to get, in Queens, um, which, it's Major Sharon's, um, American Legion post, but we, it's part of some of the money that we were able to have through Dwyer. And we have a construction services not-for-profit that's working with, um, the volunteers down at, um, the post to rehab. And I was on the phone about bathroom tiles in the women's bathroom.
Right, yeah.
That's my conversation.
And I want, I want to be clear, that's, that's, it's not capital. It's the, that's supporting the actual modality of folks coming together in a Habitat Humanities style project to go work on that post.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that's why, you know, in, in Queens, by the way, uh, Vicky Palladino, uh, does the Veteran Resource Center. I do that in my office, uh, in, uh, in the thirtieth council district. Is anybody doing that in Staten Island, the council members? Um, in their offices? I, I don't want to, you know, again, I don't want to overstress your agency, but that's a very, very good.
We just need to add to our staff fifty-two people in order to get everybody out to a council district.
I know.
Fifty-one, actually.
Yeah, well, we got, we got to try to get, we got to get the mayor not to cut your agency, Ethan.
I can say, because I do bathroom tiles and turkeys. I'm real.
So, again, there's a question regarding the VA's mental health campaign, you know, seen on city buses. Is DVS informed about it, will you?
I want to say one thing, then defer to Ellen and Lauren on that. We have a direct line of communication with the VA's Office of Public and Intergovernmental Affairs, and so they send us things like this, as far as these different assets. And we get them out to our press team, our comms team, so sometimes you'll see them come up in things we put on social media or within our newsletter. So we are in the loop, but it's not something where they're directing us on any of these. It's just, you know, we want to get aware of this.
So the VA doesn't give you any resources to help promote it?
A softman email.
I knew that, I knew the answer to that question, I just wanted to get it on the record, but. So you, so DVS, the next question, have DVS received direct instructions from the VA or the state about this campaign? So you really?
It's more of an FYI.
It's FYI, so, yeah.
Some digital assets, but that's, that's.
So you already, and again, just like, it would be nice to have, you know, just a number, or at least your logo on it would have been nice, because if it's operating on city buses, it would be nice to at least QR code or something that they could put on there, but.
What's tough with that is this stuff is managed at, for those types of campaigns, it's managed at a national level. It's not even coming from the business, not even coming from the folks responsible for healthcare in New York and New Jersey. And so it's, for us, it's, you know, how can we get them to incorporate us in a hyper-local way as far as small nuances that are appropriate for the five boroughs?
So are there, this is on intro, it's 1241 now, just some questions. Are there specific mental health organizations or CBOs in the city known to be frequently utilized by veterans? Maybe a doctor could.
Yeah, we have numerous city agencies that we work with, we have private partnerships that we refer very frequently. We have very good relationships with them.
And I'd like to at least at one point meet with you to talk about what are the more successful programs that you're seeing and how we could fund them, or at least some of them might have waiting lists and so forth that we could actually, the city council could jump in and help out a little bit on that, too, in funding. What are other barriers that exist besides privacy and other concerns in implementing the bill in 1241? Are there any barriers?
I'll start now, defer to Ellen and Lauren. When I, when I look at 1241, this is the one as far as asking to be some sort of mental health services report that DVS, you know, put out. I, I love it, I just feel like there's so many things we have to do before we get there. It's like it's the roof of the house, we're working on the foundation right now, Mr. Chair. In that, you know, a key piece is us being able to, you know, access the data on service providers who help veterans with mental health needs through Vet Connect. And so one piece of it is, we don't live in a world now where all who receive, you know, taxpayer-level funding are, to provide veteran services, are service providers in our platform. And so we almost feel like codification of Vet Connect is one step. So we can just have it in law that the city has a digital services platform for its veterans, and once it's codified, then we can say, okay, anyone who receives city taxpayer-level funding to provide services to veterans. Everyone from on the council side to my side, if you receive city taxpayer-level money, that you have to be in Vet Connect. That facilitates us being able to say, okay, now I can actually see this thing, and we can actually learn more and see what the data tells us. We'll organically incorporate it per local law forty-four, so you'll see the annual information from this. It'll get there, but it allows us to at least have more agency, so we can say, okay, now that we see this, here's what we think we should do next. And so when I think about 1241, I love its intent, but I feel as though step one is us building a portal where, right now, I as Commissioner do not know, or we do not have a direct line of communication with all of the people receiving money from the city to provide veteran services. And I almost want us to fix that, and then we can live in a world where we actually see what's going on, so we can say.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense, actually.
And I love it, I want to be clear, it's not about the work, it's about the, I need, I need step A to occur before step B, Mr. Chair. And so for us, as, for now, what we're saying is we want to be sure to, and we're already, this is, I'm happy that we're having this conversation, because something that we're looking at is, going forward, in the report that Office of Community Mental Health puts out, they have a section that talks about specific demographics, populations. This is a report that just highlights gaps in mental health services. We will now have a section there about veterans. And so you will see that, and that's to be published by January thirty-first of each year. So in the 2024 report in a few months, you'll see a section specifically on gaps in mental service, health services to veterans composed by us. And so that's something we'll do as a stopgap. I don't believe we're ready for the larger piece yet for the reasons I've described.
All right, so my last line of question is on intro 1244. And the first question is, does DVS have any informational material specifically on mental health that you distribute to veterans? Is it this, or this one?
Yes.
That's the one?
That's the big one.
Okay, any?
And we have the smaller flyer, we have the one-page flyer, we have a larger resource form. And we have, there's everything online, but as far as stuff that's, that's physical, those are the things, Mr. Chair, yeah.
Okay. So the Veteran Resource Guide, this is, this is the Veteran Resource Guide. So somebody calls your office, do you mail this, or they?
It's digital, we can.
It's digital, okay.
And we have hard copies also, we shared, we just gave about eight hundred hard copies to the Department of Homeless Services for using with their population, so we get it out, we got it to, we were at Rikers, you know, a few weeks, and we make sure that they have that there as far as the folks who are detained. So we get it out in physical form at outreach events and other things. This is the one that all community boards have, the one that we had someone, someone physically deliver this to every council, every district office for a council member, and every community board has this.
And how often is it updated?
I'd say it's no more than every two years, so as far as the clip. For this one, we're gonna put an insert in to get a more, an update now, just to, yeah, we're gonna put an insert in there, yeah. I'm sorry, you already have that insert, yeah.
And this is, this is designed by the city, I just, obviously, they, their agencies.
Our agency.
We designed it.
You designed it?
We designed this, we print this, yeah.
All right, because I could suggest something on this, if you don't mind.
We're happy to take suggestions, absolutely, yeah.
This is gonna, I'm gonna plug my, the college that I taught for forty years, right across the river, City Tech, New York City College of Technology, they have a very good, very good, where's the camera, very good art department. Sorry, but, and they do these kinds, they'll design pieces, top-notch, they'll do web, you know, pages, they'll do digital, do the video, I mean, they love.
Be happy to take, take their names and contact them.
I will give you the contact information, but I, we, when I taught there, we actually did, we did work for City Hall, I did work for Mayor Bloomberg on Operation Silent Night, we did a number of projects. Because what it does is gives, gives the students the real-life experience, they go and pitch it to you guys, they can, they can go and say, here's our new Veterans Resource Guide, and, you know, and they'll design it, no charge, because they, they need the real-world experience, so I would suggest, and even on ads and other pamphlets and things, anything visual.
Oh, great.
You have, you have, and you have others, obviously, other schools in CUNY that could do it also, but I think that would be a good, good, good resource. Anyway, the obstacles of implementing 1244?
It's, I don't, I don't like to call it an obstacle, but it, it's something that is already directed to us in two sixteen, in, in local law two sixteen, so I think that's the flag. And I personally think that 1239 and 1244, the more important discussion is to codify Vet Connect, to codify the existence of a digital services, or of a digital services platform for our veterans through the city of New York.
We've been joined by Councilmember Nurse, and do you have any questions?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's the end of my.
I'm listening, no, I'm just, no, this is all very good, I just got, I came late, so I'm piecing this all together.
Well, you know about veterans, though.
Yeah, I do.
You know about some of the obstacles.
May I interject something, Mr. Chair, if it's okay?
Yeah.
Just to, when I, this is just, you know, in a perfect world, the story I'm telling myself is that we, we stick the landing on 1237 as far as the question, you know, that, that codifying that that question be asked and that there be this opt-out, so we can kind of get as much of our data from our veterans as possible, and codifying that other agencies share that with us, I feel like that's one piece, so that we can at least know these things. And then the other piece is this codification of Vet Connect, some sort of saying in law that we must have this digital services platform. And then once we have that, we'll let the data talk to us, we'll get you everything through the local law reports as far as you'll start to see where this is going, and how many users are, and what they're doing. But beyond that, once we get to this piece, the next step to me, Mr. Chair, and to the committee, is want to live in a world where anyone who receives city taxpayer-level dollars to provide veteran services must be listed as a service provider in Vet Connect. I think, so once it's law, then we can come with that next aspect of it. And then yet another thing, because I've done this, I've looked at the council, you know, what's been going out with discretionary funding for years, if you receive city taxpayer-level funding to put on an event for our veterans, notify us within a certain number of days.
That's good, yeah.
That doesn't happen right now, and that's, and that's a toll, and that ties back to outreach also. When we talk about outreach, that's another one where we, we can read, we all can read the same things that's publicly available of, we see a group receive funding to put on an event, that's it, I don't know anything else. And so if there was something where, and we're working to get a handle on that, this goes back to the discretionary contracts discussion we've had, where we have a pilot, we're looking at five discretionary contracts we will run this year, this fiscal year, and that's in process, but you've got fifty to sixty contracts in total for veterans that are awarded typically to the council. And so for us, if we live in a world where the, you know, A, if you receive money for services, you're in Vet Connect, B, if you receive money for events, notify DVS, I think that's good all around.
Right. Just to piggyback again, something in 1244 about getting the word out, information material. What I mentioned about the City Tech and, you know, where I taught for forty years, they could also, and there's some creative programs that I'd like to help with, so I don't want to just give it all to you, but I think this committee can help. There, there's billboard companies all throughout the city that have ads, they'll have gaps where they don't have ads for a few months. And we could, we could actually, or the students could design some ads for your agency. And the, and I'm sure that the billboard companies, because they want to, they don't want an ad up that's peeling, that's graffitied, that's outdated already, so they want to replace it. And when we, we had one on Myrtle Avenue in my district, two billboards, a few years ago, that weren't really utilized, they were peeling, that some of the paper was coming down. So, you know, we alerted the company, and they put up recruitment posters, I told you about this. They had two recruitment posters, I think one was for the Marines. They kept them up for years, they didn't change them. I think one is still up now, and it has to be, it's starting to deteriorate. So I think if we come up with a program, or we could actually offer help for our veterans and have your agency contacted, or the VA contacted, we could do, we could do ads, or the students can do it, design it with your material in there, and get the billboard companies, I'm sure, I'll, I'll reach out to them to see if they're willing to do the production work on it, so no cost to you.
Sounds great.
Obviously, no cost to students, and we get free advertising, at least as a filler for the billboards. And I would, you know, start with my district, but I would also go to other districts. But I think that should be, that could be a citywide program. And this is what I was mentioning, in the number of hearings that we had, there's, we have bus stops with advertising on it, and sometimes it's, there's nobody booked for a certain period of time, so we could actually have filler ads that could jump in there. It's worth trying, anything we can do.
We, 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 we'll get on your calendar and have that conversation.
Let's have, let's have a meeting, because I'd like to then pitch it to the colleges, it doesn't have to be my, the college that I taught, it doesn't have to be City Tech, but they're very good, but it could be other, you know, schools around the city, it could even be high school students.
I believe visual arts has.
Yeah, Art and Design, Art and Design did an actual project on our subways, to stop subway surfing. And they, they did a very good campaign, so they're very talented, we have students in our system in the City University, and also in our, in our high schools that could do this. And again, what I think is, for an agency like yours with a very small budget, this would be probably the best way to reach out to veterans and to people that are not, you know, aware of some of the programs. Thank you, thanks so much, any other? Okay, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, staff, everybody, and we didn't get to hear from Paul Vallone, but we'll get him next time. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna have the public testimony now, if you'd like to sign in, if you haven't, see the Sergeant-at-Arms. Thanks again.
All right, I will now be calling up individuals and panels to testify. Once your name is called, you may come up and you may begin your testimony. Once Sergeant-at-Arms sets the clock and gives you the cue, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to seventy-two hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. All testimony will be limited to three minutes, remember, there's a few-second delay when you're unmuted before we can hear you. The first panel will be Joe Bello and Andrew.
Joe Bello, you want to start? No? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, good. Good morning, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andrew, City Council.
Go ahead, go ahead, Andrew.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, my name is Andrew, and it's a pleasure to be here to talk about the veterans. I do appreciate the veterans protecting America, but I'm not sure, like, if they're aware of an actor named Robin Williams, he killed himself because of the medication that he was on. So there's a doc.gov website that I would like to give you guys, it's called pubmed.gov, which speaks about the medications that the people are being administered, that they would kill themselves, or they would go out and kill, kill others. I learned that from a guy on the radio named Gary Knoll, he comes on every day at ninety-nine point five FM at Trevor Clark, speaks about the mental state, cancer, and different things. So I first like to mention that. Also, I'd like to mention I'm being attacked by law enforcement, that's why I gave out the flyers here. They had attacked me, and they had released the video. They did that to another guy named Laquama down in Chicago, they murdered him, and they made the Burger King, and they had released the video, they showed everything on the news. So I would like for the City Council to take time to investigate my situation as to what's going on, because I gave you guys the QR code to the video that I made, that I put in online, what law enforcement is doing to me. But they do this to people throughout America as well, which is quite dangerous to other people. So I'm concerned about the veterans, and I'm concerned about the American public, how law enforcement is treating the American public.
We're concerned with veterans and the mental health on this, this hearing. So if you could give us some of that information, we'll, we'll look at it, if it's concerning veterans. Okay, thank you, thanks so much for your testimony.
Okay, so you're not concerned about the American public being attacked by law enforcement?
No, we, again, if you give us the information, we'll, we'll look at it, okay? Thank you, okay, Joe Bello?
Hello, okay. Good morning, Chairman Holden, members of the Veterans Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning on the proposed legislation focused on veterans' mental health, which is part of the council's mental health roadmap to improve outcomes for all New Yorkers. Many of us recognize, especially if you're active in the community, that DVS is one of the smallest agencies in the city with a budget of roughly five million dollars. Like many agencies over the past several years, DVS has seen a decline in its personnel, and has had to shift personnel to cover various programs and outreach. In March twenty twenty-one, Mayor de Blasio signed Executive Order sixty-five, which mandated that all agencies adopt by the end of twenty, fiscal year twenty-one, a standard uniform and veteran indicator question on their intake forms, question. a standard uniform and veteran indicator question on their intake forms, questionnaires, or requests for assistance. The purpose was to connect previously unknown veteran populations, as well as new veterans, to services and benefits they may qualify for, including legal, housing, employment, and education assistance. Each agency was supposed to start submitting this data on October fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Intro twelve thirty-seven would seemingly codify this executive order, which I should note still remains in effect. However, to date, uh, no one from the public has seen any demographic data from twenty twenty-one onward from either the previous administration or the current one, and the mayor's most recent MMR provided no data on this either, other than to, to give a percentage number of veterans and their families referred to resources and services. I also wanted to add in that at the last hearing that we had on ment- on mental health, uh, we talked about Vet Connect, um, Mission VetCheck, and how it had been canceled. The mayor's MMR actually specifically said that, uh, Mission VetCheck was stopped in July, August of twenty twenty-two, and I know that DVS is starting that up again, so I, I'd like to see those numbers as well, as to who's using, uh, what those numbers look like since they've started again. My concern with intro twelve thirty-seven is that without knowing what the agencies have collected as a result of EO sixty-five, or what the demographic data looks like, we're asking them to throw out the baby with the bathwater and start again in a time of budget cuts and reduced personnel. I know it's just numbers, but it, you know, with, when, if we pass intro twelve thirty-seven, it conceivably have the unintended consequences of double dipping on the data and numbers of veterans seeking services. This intro also mandates third parties through contract to collect demographic information, which could also add additional issues into the collection of the data. I cannot support this intro at this time, although I'm, you know, it, it's a, it is good, it just needs to be flushed out more. I would recommend the committee request the administration to provide the EO sixty-five information. I would also recommend that the intro be aligned, kind of like a blending of twelve thirty-seven and what the question contained in EO sixty-five. For example, in, in twelve thirty-seven, I would take out, what is the relevance of the city needing to know what branch of service an individual was in? Finally, the survey data report compiled by DVS should be amended to be submitted not only to the speaker, but to the Veterans Committee Chair and the city's Veterans Advisory Board, which represent the community. With respect to intro twelve thirty-nine, DVS does have a mental health webpage, Connect to Wellness, where they have one pagers to review, most of it just being VA, to mental health resources available to veterans and family members. Uh, however, you know, as was said, I don't know how often it is reviewed or updated. Uh, my concern, uh, is that while I agree that the mayor's Community Affairs and Public Engagement Unit could be doing more on the outreach front, Commissioner Hendon did testify at DVS's executive budget hearing last May that from last fiscal year, the agency cut nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for media marketing, specifically the iHeartRadio Christmas marketing campaign that few people knew about. To everyone's knowledge, that, that's the extent of the agency's citywide public advertising, so unless some funding is going to be put in for a specific advertising, I don't see that happening. Even Lori Sutton had talked about doing that, and it never happened. So with a five percent peg just happening, and potentially another two scheduled for early next year, which would most likely come from DVS's other than personnel services or ops monies, I share ICL CEO Jody Rude's concern that with a potential fifteen percent peg, how are we asking DVS, including the non-for-profits, to do this work when DVS doesn't have the, necessarily have the manpower, and the council did not increase its funding to the Veterans Initiative? With regards to intro twelve forty-one, this legislation in its current form should be held over. New York City regards everyone who served regardless of discharge to be a service, to be a veteran. The city also includes active duty military personnel stationed in New York City as veterans. Therefore, if Councilman Dinowitz's intro twelve thirty-seven legislation were to pass, there are nonprofit organizations providing mental health services that would have to be added into intro twelve forty-one as well. Additionally, the annual report on the provision of mental health services should be amended to be separate and distinct from any other report DVS is required to submit. Regarding intro twelve forty-four, I appreciate the public advocate's work with Theater of War on bringing veterans' mental health to the forefront. However, with this legislation, and was stated, DVS already has one-page pamphlets and mental health resources on its webpage. The issue here seems to be distribution to social service agencies, council member offices, that doesn't need to be litigated. Additionally, the Veterans Resource Guide would need to be reviewed and updated annually. Finally, I am supportive of your resolution, Council, uh, Chairman, Reso three eighty-seven, to provide eligible veterans with support dogs, but I recognize that it currently costs upward between fifteen to thirty thousand dollars, depending on the specific skill required to train them, and that not all dogs make the cut. I also see that DVS uses an example for funding for the Joseph P. Dwyer Program, not Tiles, for animal assisted modalities, but we'll have to see what DVS's concept papers tells, says, whenever that comes out. In conclusion, I want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership, for raising awareness of this issue, and I want to echo the Speaker's statement to thank Councilmembers Lee, Holden, Dinowitz, Narcisse, as well as the public advocate for their work on these items. I believe there is potential with these bills, but we need to get them right. Thank you.
And, and I agree with most of your, uh, testimony, certainly the size of the agency, they should not, uh, DVS should not be part of the peg, there should be no cuts, because we don't have a, you know, the agency should be twice the size, I agree, and I think the Commissioner would agree, uh, he, because he's dedicated his life to serving our veterans, so, um, and this is the frustrating thing, I, I put in for initiatives, the fund, uh, from the council, and again, there, it's fallen on deaf ears. So, uh, we owe, you know, we, we do everything, we, we increase budgets, uh, you know, for a lot of other programs, and yet we don't do that for our veterans, and enough, uh, budget, and we actually cut benefits, uh, or, or services. Uh, biggest challenge that I see, uh, and I tried to address it today a little bit, and, and at this time, we'll try to get it actually done, is just the outreach. Uh, notifying veterans, putting it on, uh, you know, out there on bus shelters, billboards, um, or even, uh, try, you know, again, without a budget item there, without money. And, and I think we could do that, we've done it in the past, uh, and I said we, we could probably do it again on a, on a more permanent basis, but again, thank you both for your testimony, and, um, I know Joe, Joe will, will be in touch, uh, and we'll see you out there, because you're a good advocate, thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair Holden, we have now heard from everyone who has signed to testify, if we inadvertently missed anyone who'd like to testify, please, uh, visit Sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. What's your name?
Peter.
Well, you just come up, Peter Kempner.
All right, we just found your card.
Knew I had done it.
All right, you may start.
Thank you, Chair Holden, and thank you for the, to the members of the, the Veterans Committee for holding this hearing. My name is Peter Kempner, and I am the Legal Director at Volunteers of Legal Service. Our mission is to leverage private attorneys to provide free legal services to low-income New Yorkers to help fill the justice gap. The Vols Veterans Initiative, which is part of our senior law project, strives to empower older New Yorkers who served in the military to age in place with dignity, access legal services, and live without fear of homelessness. Our free legal services assist older veterans in making key decisions about incapacity and of life planning by providing them with Last Wills and Testaments, powers of attorney, healthcare proxies, and other advanced directives. These documents enable our clients to ensure that their dying wishes are clear, and that they're being carried out by the people that they love and trust the most. Um, in addition to the work in our senior law project, we also have a Veterans Initiative in our micro enterprise project. Uh, for over twenty years, our micro enterprise project has provided free, high-quality legal services to small business owners and micro entrepreneurs. For many veterans owning a small business is an effective path to financial stability and independence upon their return from service. Vols aids with drafting of contracts, reviewing government documents, protecting intellectual property, and advising on commercial leases. My comments today focus on intros twelve thirty-seven and twelve forty-four. Screening for and collecting data with respect to military service is critically important. Knowing whether someone has, a history of military service can be the key to unlocking benefits and services which could be life-changing. Asking the question, have you or anyone in your family or household ever served in the US military, is a simple yet effective method of ensuring that, uh, veteran or family member's military affiliation is accounted for, opening up a vast number of possible benefits and solutions to problems that might not otherwise have been considered. The benefits available to veterans through the VA and other programs are extensive and often life-changing. Knowing somebody's veteran status can mean access to eviction prevention grants, housing subsidies, cash benefits, healthcare services, preferences for affordable housing, job opportunities, veteran-focused social services, educational grants, and many other programs. The New York City veterans community is incredibly diverse, and many in the community face a wide variety of challenges. Often those with a hil- history of military service do not think of going to DVS for help, but instead turn to other agencies for assistance. When these other agencies fail to screen for military service, we miss an opportunity to provide veterans specific services and care. While we applaud the first steps taken by intro twelve thirty-seven, if adopted, it is also important to note that if agencies simply collect the data and do not apply that data to solutions, we continue to miss opportunities to serve our city's veterans. Data collection can certainly shed light on the demographics of our veteran community and what social services they're seeking, but the goal should be to provide access to the best benefits and services possible. Agencies must create systems, um, to, to have a feedback loop with DVS to ensure that no veteran slips through the cracks. Having a single informational pamphlet, such as the one envisioned in twelve forty-four, could be a useful tool for those agencies and others to direct veterans to the right programs and services, but we must, um, all be dedicated to guaranteeing that, that individuals who sacrifice the most on behalf of our country have access to benefits, resources, and assistance they need and have earned. We'd like to thank the council for holding this hearing and inviting us to testify. We hope that the city will continue to invest in services and programs that make New York City a place where veterans feel supported, welcomed, and at home, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kempner, by the way, uh, you mentioned, and we talked about this today, some of, we, we can collect the data, or the agency will, will get the information that that person's a veteran, but what do they do with it?
Right.
And, and that's, that's some of the hurdle that, that, uh, the Commissioner was mentioned, and the staff was mentioning. Um, and that is a major hurdle, what agency, by your experience, what agency is probably the most lax with that? That, that they, I mean, is it the Police Department, because I, you know, I, we heard that already? Like, what do they do with it?
I don't know what any of them do with it, frankly.
You're not gonna get in trouble here, don't worry about it.
I don't want to name names, um, no, but it, it's simply asking the question, and, and taking out city agents, if you're sure, second, I, I had a recent conversation with another legal services provider, when I was telling a story about a client who we found out had worked, had, had served in the military, we discovered that he had served during a period of wartime, he had an honorable discharge, he was facing eviction, and we realized that he was eligible for a VA pension, and that is what solved his problem, that is the key that unlocked the door to those benefits. And I was telling another legal services provider in another part of the country the story, and she said to me, oh, we ask people whether or not they served in the military, and then we, we put it on a shelf, and we don't know what to do with that information. And so that is key, asking the question is great, but how do you apply that information to solutions for those clients? Um, and so simply, and, and hearing from the, from the, from DVS on this, where they get numbers, what do those numbers mean? If those people on the other side of the line aren't trained and provided resources for those veterans, and that specific contact information is given over DV, to DVS, so they can engage with those veterans and help them find solutions?
So, so if you, if we could talk, uh, you know, and maybe we can meet at one point, so I could, uh, pick your brain about what areas we need to do, what are some of the solutions? Because I'd like to address that on this committee, uh, certainly you're on the front lines, and you see. Uh, do you have any experience with veteran treatment courts?
I do have some of that, uh, experience, I used to actually sit on the Advisory Council for the Brooklyn Veteran Treatment Court some years ago, and, and, and that's actually, and, and I know that folks slip through the, the cracks, especially with, uh, the NYPD, but the, the courts are actually a great example of screening for military service and then diverting people to the right programs. Um, I would love to see that in the civil courts, in addition to the criminal courts. Um, you know, if a veteran is facing eviction, and we, we ask everybody who's coming through the eviction process in the housing courts, whether they or somebody in their household served in the military, we can ensure that those folks are hooked up with legal services providers that are providing specific services for veterans, that they're given over to, um, CBOs who have the SSVF program that has eviction prevention grants for veterans who are facing eviction, uh, you know, if the eviction is inevitable, having them, um, you know, be provided with possibility of getting a HUD-VAS Section Eight voucher. Um, and so, really, at all points of contact with all of these systems, whether they're city agencies or the courts, screening for military service is really key.
Right, so, because I, uh, we've visited Rikers a few weeks ago, uh, the veterans, on Veterans Day, and, uh, we, uh, you know, we had about a hundred, over a hundred men in the room, and we asked them, uh, about Veterans Treatment Court. Only four out of probably a hundred, four or five, raised their hands that they were dealing with it. Now, I know some cases are ineligible, um, but there should be, probably half of them, I should have raised their hand. And I think that's, that's another hurdle that we have to overcome, and we have to get to the bottom of, you know, what, if they do check off a box, you know, when they're arrested, if the police officer that interviews checks off the veterans box, what happens to that, again? And that's why I was dealing with the Queens DEA on this, to try to get that. Uh, but any, any recommendations you could make, uh, I'd, I'd like to hear, thanks so much, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right.
Thank you, seeing no one else, I'd like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to seventy-two hours after the close of this hearing, by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair Holden, we have now concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you so much, everyone who testified, and, uh, looking forward to our next hearing, this, this hearing is adjourned.